Good evening and welcome to the June 11th regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin. Call the meeting to order and join in the pleasure. Take a second to welcome Pat Scott, our legislator. Thank you for coming. Good to see you. And Jane?
I have something I'd like to read. Sadly, we mourn the loss of our former town board member Ed Kraus. Those of you that have been residents of Tustin for many years will remember that Ed served on the Tustin Town Board during one of the few tumultuous times in our history. Although his beliefs were not always popular, Ed served conviction of what he believed was the best for the residents of our town. In the end, he was correct, and his convictions were key to the protections and health and safety we enjoy today. Ed continued to voice his convictions to the town board officials when I personally was approached often, it seemed during one of his daily walks. His walks were an important part of his life and he was seen daily without fail. Weather did not impede his movement. Ed was loving father of three children that he and his wife Dorian raised on the flats. He and Dorian remained in their historic home even after the children were grown, and Ed served as an unofficially appointed walk dog for the happenings on the flats. He watched the evolution of time change certain aspects of the flats. He was able to adapt to these changes. On a personal note, I respected Ed's opinion and often saw his advice on town matters. Was always welcome in the Kraus home, even when visiting unexpectedly, discussed the pressing matter. Ed Kraus will be missed by me and many others. Let us pause for a moment of silence in memory. Thank you.
Can we get an amen for them? Bill?
We're up now.
Any of you didn't pick up this? I guess I've come up there and thought that's what you do. I'm just gonna throw this stuff out here. Some samples of what we're not supposed to get. Did you just see my butt on there? Including this. So are you, who here is not familiar with the NextTrex? Not familiar with the NextTrex, that we do in town? Everybody is familiar with it? No? Okay. So we didn't have one of those flyers, it's great. So Randy Marola and the T-Tustin Energy Committee started this three and a half year before she left, and as far as time that they were doing it and collecting it and sorting it, they collected eleven tons of soft plastic. That's in three and a half years. So that is just, you know, Ed, so yeah, you're like, what? So, you know, I do have some notes and I'll try to follow them. So NextTrex is the company they make those chairs or benches that we have around town. We've got eight of them over the years. We used to get one for every 500 pounds every six months. Now it's 1,000 pounds one a year. But, and that's just to show you how much excess plastic there is in general, but this is just soft plastic. This is like a microcosm of what is out there, you know? And that's our little tiny town. Did you ask me that? No? Okay, that's all right. Okay, okay. But so, and Randy and started a lot of collecting and sorting of it. And so if you look through the pages and everything, it's happened. We are in this town hall and we spread out the big tarp and we empty every single bag that we collect from every store to go through it. So that, because there's a lot of things people don't know. It's kind of cold recycling, you know, you think everything can go in, and that's not the case. The paperwork here is a very, very good breakdown of what is acceptable and what's not. You know, in this case, there is a bad stuff that was just, it was almost like everything that person had best to avoid. Just lay a paper and that all went, you know, so, I mean, these are, you know, it's, it's very specific what you'll see on these lists. It's very interesting, you know, because you would think that, or it says anything that crackles or rips is not acceptable. What there is an exception because the cereal boxes have, they accept the plastic that the cereal's out to the end. Well, that's plastic. But they do accept that. So it's very convoluted a little bit, but so you have to see what it is and so, you know, like, these candy bags are not acceptable. This was in it. This was in our last bunch of stuff that we went through, so, you know, everybody, you know what it is. This is a bag just really full of plastic recycling, whatever, you know, all sorts of stuff that don't go in. It's not soft plastic except the bag is in. This is the one, we take the bag, not the handle, you know, so I mean, it's very, we go through every, like I said, every bit of it. And it's, it's, we have, we have these benches that are all around town. The next bench that we're getting is going to be put by Eagle Valley Real Estate, so people can look at the dove or the eagle that has Eagle Valley or have lunch or whatever over there. I'm just trying to get more things, more people aware of of this soft plastic recycling and to get it, get people aware of what is available, what we can bring, what you can't bring. We are going to keep growing and it's getting bigger. I mean, we went through stuff here the other day and we collected 540 pounds in the last three months. Yeah, that's, that's a lot. And that's just soft plastic. That's not all the other plastic that's out in the world. Sorry, I'm not looking at you guys. Sorry. So I just want to say that, oh, yeah, frankly, crunchy frozen food bags, you would think they are soft plastic, but they are not. I call them on that because, you know, there are two kinds of frozen food that when you look at them, one is frankly acceptable. The other one is pretty much like all other foods. And they're, they're not accepted because they have a film, another material out there to help keep the frozen stuff better frozen, you know, from going on and, you know, freezer burn and stuff. So we just wanted, you know, get everybody on board. Everybody, I have to tell you, everybody in this town is on a wonderful job. We wouldn't have collected 11 tons of plastic without the support of everybody in this town. And, but if we can get it out more, we can collect more, get more on benches, sadly, one a year versus two, but, you know, we'll take what we can get. Keep on moving forward, like when Randy and the GEC started and, and I guess then Brett worked with the kids that had been accustomed to it. It explains, you know, those kinds of stuff to them as well. What about that? Anybody having questions?
Just to let you know, a lot of the school staff are supporting this now.
Awesome.
There's boxes all over the school.
That's great to hear. Yeah.
We might be lacking some weight.
You know, that's all we need. Because we come back each twice a month, just sort through and pick through every bag that comes in. And, you know, it's generally, we have fourteen bags of stuff come in, you know, that we consolidated, but yeah, what we did on Saturday. Okay. Yeah, there's a lot, you know? That's just our little town. So, so the main thing, the biggest thing anybody could do is try to not buy any of this. You know, soft plastic, whatever you can, Wise is one store that you can get through the frank weeds. I have bags that are reusable or vacuumed. I put my weeds in there and that's where I generally buy if I'm not, if I'm over in Homestead. But, yeah, if anybody has any questions.
While you were talking, generally like the carrot, the potato, the bread bag, they're safe. How about that, you know, that thin plastic produce department?
No, you'll find that that leaks. So if it rips like paper, they don't.
That's not good, alright.
Yes, it stretches, that's what they'll take. Frozen food bags, you have some of them that do stretch, but they won't take that.
Okay.
So, you know, there's a little bit of gray area there, but, you know, they, they also are very receptive to phone calls. I've called them a couple of times to ask questions. You know, they've been very helpful. And now, but we, we just wish people would grow all their garbage that they just don't want in bags. That'd be great. We just thank you for part of your, thanks for collecting so long too. So, we'll talk about that, but you all, yeah. Alright, that's all I got. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, so there's, if anybody doesn't have information, it's here. And thank you for your time. And I'll take the barbeque with me.
We go in with the bag lady and.
Payment of bills, general dispersed $68,074.67. Highway dispersed $134,967.63. Water dispersed $22,772.58. The sewer dispersed $16,272.81. For a total of $242,087.69. Bruce and Kevin, any? Thoughts of the bill? A motion to accept and pay the bills is presented. So moved. A second? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Division reports, again, the division reports are online for those that don't. The energy committee is awaiting a date for the hookup of the parking lots in 93 Main. June 18th is the date set for the Cobra headlights that were not changed out. In May 15th, the work crew completed work on six non-functional lights. And there's an attachment to that. Conservation Advisory Council?
Representatives from the engineering institute on Thursday, May 16th. We drove through all the different artists in town, so they were ready to get a sense of us and what we're doing. They liked what they saw. That's it for now. We're going to be, um, soon, right? No, they.
20th at 1:00.
20th at 1:00. That's it.
Okay. Kevin, you want to update on the NGS for the building or go with that?
Well, we got an estimate on the water remediation that is pretty. So that's a, that's still a work in progress.
Jane Grinch?
Water infrastructure project continues speaking with the engineer. We think we're getting closer every time because we're starting to hear questions coming down from the state where we're hoping that we're moving along. That's what we think. UDC, nothing to report on our current grant, but a new grant cycle has been announced, so maybe we want to talk about what we should be, well, I know what we're going to put in for it. If the word of course it will be the second half of the outdoor recreation, the one we're doing with the NGS. And that's efficient wildlife, I said that, that they were here. And I'm in the process of submitting a T-Mobile grant for town hall innovations and upgrades, which is a reason that we've had the urban incentives come about to build water.
Water shower committee? The big takeaway there was that Craig, he got an estimate on the generator for the sewer. You know, wants to keep, wants to move forward with that, but Casper, remind me if I'm wrong, didn't he say that he needed to get a new estimate on that because of some things weren't in the old, you know, that is?
Well, I don't think he thought it would be a lot different.
I just think, we don't have a number here to vote on. So should we? I just, should we approve that he goes out to bid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're making a recommendation to the board that.
That he goes up.
He goes up to.
Okay.
Breaks the generator and.
Sewer plant. Takes the current generator out of the.
Right.
So, you don't think that was what it was, something about the removal of it? Right, that's what I think the that's what I think the outstanding figure was, the removal of of some of this stuff.
Um, Tustin Youth?
Okay. So we are still working with the Tustin Social on weekly programming, free programming for the kids. This is our upcoming last week of Last School Club, which ends on spring 7th. Then we go into break and we're picking back up for two summer sessions this year. We are doing every Wednesday, starting July 10th, and that will run every Wednesday through the end of August. We'll be here from 4 to 6 at the town hall. And we have hired and we're working with Heather Lockwood, Lockwood Studios in Calhoun, so this is a marketing program. So that's down here. Then starting July 13th, through the end of August, we're doing a Saturday morning program. We're calling it Unplugged. This is something we had done and started way before COVID. We did it down here. It wasn't a huge success. But we've grown, so the concept is to get the kids off their phones, off their electronics, don't play outside. So this will take place, for the most part, down at the park on the flats. And we will be doing one trip to the Tustin Trail for a hike. So that's our collaboration with the Tustin Social. As far as our trips go, we still have rooms for Calhoun, so for your friends and your family. Upcoming, we are taking a trip to the Carousel Park, which is right over in Beach Lake, so you can look for information on that. Please remember, as far as Tustin Youth paying for children, we pay for Tustin children only. However, we have really good group rates, like for Carousel, all day pass for everything they offer for $33. So we're offering that to everyone. So if you have friends or family and they're unchested or whatnot, they're also able to come with us, pay through us, and we all go together as a group. Something new, which is kind of a pop-up concept, we are working with Susan over at the Chi-Hi. They run a summer camp every year, and Susan has approached us and said, I would like to work with you guys and get as many kids in as you can. So this is where we always say budget is a living thing and pitch managers, but this isn't something we budgeted for, but it's a really great opportunity because she's really willing to work with us, just cover some expenses and let's see how many Tustin kids we can get in. So that's in motion as we speak. We're continuing to work for Port Delaware through the Fisher Trump Kids Program, which is a volunteer kids program. I shouldn't say volunteer. It is like a summer camp, hands-on program, and through that evolved a volunteer program where they now have kids volunteering because they loved it so much, they didn't want to leave. It's a miracle thing to work with John and build up on that. So that's not a whole lot, but it's a lot. In the upcoming months, we'll get back to you midsummer as we continue for Halloween and Christmas. Just a reminder, because we've been getting emails, there's no Fourth of July event, community event this year. We were not able to get use of the field. Hopefully next year, maybe we're thinking about some other places. We'll see if our field pans out. We hope to bring something back next year. So, but please help spread the word, because we're getting vendor applications and people across the county still thinking it's happening.
Can you tell me about the art? What kind of art experience?
So the agenda's literally on my desk, but I know she has with a cover, it's like string art where you're creating designs and, you know, we've read that glow up art, I'm not really sure what that's going to entail. But she came up with a five-week program and every week, and the way I'm going to register this year is I handle registration and do our Facebook and things like that. I would do it every week throughout the school year just because with kids clubs, it's hard to pick the whole year. Because summer's so busy for our families, myself, I'm going to put out registration as a whole. I'm going to list, here's all the events happening, our art program. Please pick your top two and we're going to hold, it's going to be a little bit of a big tall puzzle on my end at first to make sure the kids get into what they want. But just to have a pre-registration open and done. But anyway, my point was, I'll lay all the art programs out.
Hope for future benefit. I'm looking for a piece of youth art for art reviewing, so maybe.
Okay, okay, yeah, definitely talk about that.
Moving into old business 3.1, the Pavilion. Josh Campfield is here from the Job Corps. Would you come up and speak to the board about what programs you guys have? Nah, you come right up here, that's fine.
So we have reconstruction trades on the center. Job Corps itself is essentially like a school for underprivileged youth. So when you get kids 16 to 24, they have absolutely no job skills. When they come, we teach them everything, how to use a hammer, how to mend a thing, how to cut. All the way up to building things. Trades on the center are electrical, facilities maintenance, carpentry. And so I teach the electrical program. We do everything with house wiring, AC DC power, silver stuff, the whole nine yards. Facilities maintenance does a bit of everything. Anytime, anything you see on a building, they'll fix it, they take it apart. They do a lot of maintenance on the center itself. So the kids get hands-on training dinner in a real application. And then our carpentry program, they're carpenters, built up.
So something like municipalities, you bring your Votek students out in buildings?
Yeah, so we can do work for nonprofits. We can't do work for profit companies. We do have the ability to send students out for like work-based learning with little companies. I have one of mine with Narisburg Electric right now.
So something like Pavilion Project that we've got?
We can do just about everything on it. The only thing we can do is port slap. Outside of that, it's a fairly simple building to put up.
I know one of the things that, and I don't know if you've got the answer for that, but an agreement, signed agreement with the municipality that you're joining to work with?
Yep, that'd be an MOU.
Okay.
Yep, they would draw it up, send it over. It's something that we do for every site that we work on.
Okay.
I believe we're even working with some radio station out in Liberty right now. Right there somewhere. Yeah, that one. We're getting the building and then redoing the entire first story on it.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Josh?
So.
Because we don't have the tools necessary to smooth it out. Something about load, this element.
Yeah, one of the things, I talked to the highway department about prepping, if we get, if the Job Corps brings forward an agreement, it gets approved by Ken for the board in our insurance carrier, then we could go out and find quotes for the materials. We would have to do the concrete, so we'd have to put the concrete out. But the highway department will prepare the ground. He said he could do everything right up to the stone, so they'd only have to come and pour. So as a plus savings, I think this is a way for us to take a look and see what kind of number we come up with.
And our two instructors for the one for facility maintenance, the one for carpentry are both skilled carpenters. That was their career before they.
Any other questions?
And would somebody from Job Corps always, like a supervisor would always be on site?
The instructor would, yes.
The instructor would.
Yep, and they would have up to 12 students. We can't go over that because that's a state concern.
Right.
Not a big building.
So he or she would be the clerk of the work, if you want to. Most likely it would be Tom Hill Regal.
Any questions, Ken? Okay. I think that's all enough for right now, but move forward with the discussion by the board. I appreciate you coming in on short notice. Um. Does the board wish to pursue this further, to have Josh skip all the Hill Regal and bring us an agreement that could be looked at by our council? And then we can start getting prices on other stuff.
How far, how far out are you scheduled?
Realistically, you could probably start off in two weeks if you needed to. This is your project for the students. It's not too involved, so it works out better.
Yeah, seems sort of like a perfect project.
Well, two concerns I've always voiced was that a $20,000 grant had turned into a six-finger grant. So this looks like a way that you're scaling back the cost. Which we still have to find out what it's.
What the costs are, but whatever. I mean, it seems like intelligence, you know, way to skin that cat.
How do we figure out the cost without going out to bid? How do you figure out?
Well, we won't go out to bid. What it will be is, I'll work with Jim and get quotes for the lumber.
Okay.
And depending on the concrete cost, I don't believe that that'll fit public works because we're doing part of it. So it'll be, it should be under the $20,000, so we could keep that from going out to bid.
Who'd pay for the slab? Is that a highway cost?
No, that would be the general budget.
Okay.
We'll just use their work.
So their labor would be?
Yeah, their labor is, is out of the towns and the stone.
So the major expense would be derelict or whomever were buying the material.
Expense would be the material, then.
Yeah.
Remember, it was a $20,000 grant, wasn't there a match?
Yeah, it was a match.
No, no, like I said, sorry, the $20,000 grant wishing us into an enormous.
Well, I understand.
Okay. So I will work on getting some quotes for lumber and. I need resolution.
Resolution, yeah.
I would.
I'd make the motion that supervisor.
James.
James.
Focus or material here in the slab. I have a motion, a second? A second? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Uh, the sewer plant generator. I guess we'll just have.
Right, put together, get us a formal bid.
Okay. So I would make the motion to allow the Frank Stenker put together the bid for the sewer plant generator. And we'll have to I don't really have a date to have that by, so we probably approve this at the next meeting or next meeting. So I put that second there. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. 3.3, the Tustin Youth Commission Agreement. Motion to accept agreement between the town of Tustin and the Tustin Youth Commission out of June 11, 2024. Our test wish to facilitate funding of the Tustin Youth Commission for the benefit of the following youth programs. Unplugged for 2000, Summer Hart and Garden Club for 2000. Winter Fund for 2000. Holiday Celebrations for 7,500. Museum History and Culture Experience, 1,500. Whereas the Tustin Youth wishes to institute activities for the benefit of the youth of the town of Tustin is here, therefore agreed by the in between the parties, the town of Tustin shall fund the Tustin Youth Commission to the extent of $14,500. That's going to include some of the money that you guys have gotten as the extra grants.
What does that mean? Right, I'm just a little confused. Is this?
No, we're not. They've got money coming in, grants that they've got coming in. I believe you had 20 before we started.
We had applied for, I think at the last meeting I had, so we actually were given 14 and a half thousand dollars on top of what the county has already given up. We decided we're going to apply to more programming. So this is all additional funds we've never had before. But you have to use the funds and then use the reimbursement.
Oh, so then, do you buy those to the town and then we give it that?
No, so definitely, we haven't gotten the money yet. No, so definitely, we we haven't gotten the money yet from the county, because we have to spend it first. So the town always upfronts the money to the youth. And then we submit our claim and all our receipts and all that stuff, and then we get the check back and it goes directly into the town's account.
What's the timeline on that? When does the county make the?
I'd have to check the paperwork because they've changed some of it, we have to have things working by October. It's October, October, some of them are this will the actual this will year. So we can have Crystal get that information. Exactly, yeah. So, yeah.
I have a motion to accept agreement between the town of Tustin and the Tustin Youth.
I'll second.
Uh, for the discussion, all in favor? I opposed. Three point four, a budget line creation and modification for this, motion to create a budget line, A. Seven, six, two, zero point four, adult recreation. And move two thousand from A nineteen ninety point four contingency for Tustin. Seniors as previously approved by resolution thirty four twenty four. And within that motion to approve the following budget modifications for the Tustin Youth Commission, programming increased. Youth A seven, three, one, zero point four, by sixteen thousand five hundred. We will decrease contingency until it comes back in. I will second, all in favor? Opposed. Is there any other old business that I have missed?
Just to be clear about the facility, Josh, and again, I don't want to be, you know, paying, I just think we need to be clear. The job corps is going to do this, and they have the agreement that we're working on, is based on what plans? And when were those plans approved?
Um, the plans that we have. Plans that we would go out, the ones that we had developed in order to go out to do, so it'd be the same, the same plans that we've had. They would not have changed at all. Any other old business? They do not have anything new business in some less.
May I have a resolution from the board to apply for the T-Mobile?
Didn't we give you the election?
I couldn't find it in the minutes, so I want to be able to.
I would make a motion to authorize. Jane Luxinger to apply for the T-Mobile grant. For building improvements.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed.
Yeah, I have a motion to apply for the UDC grant for the second half of the open space.
Just pushing the envelope tonight. I'll make that one, which can. I will second. All in favor? Opposed. Is there any other business before we go to public comment? I will open up for public comment, we'll start on Zoom. Open public comment to the floor. Yes, Doc.
Yeah, Randy and Star have to, I would just like to get a clarification request, but are, if you adjust the microphone. Thank you. I don't know, sorry, Tommy. Always not working. I'd just like to get something clarified before I make my comments. Ben used to about something about six lights that were, something was going with, and I didn't catch that one.
Uh, they were terrible.
Which ones?
Well, this is right here, aren't they?
Yeah.
Right here, Star.
Okay, so that's the agenda that you guys, which is not the augmented one that we don't get. Okay, well, I try that back to me with the parks, okay.
Three seventy-two Delaware Drive, three seventy-two Delaware Drive, fifty-five Hickory, four Grove, fifty. Five Third Avenue and forty-six Fifth Street. Were the ones.
Okay, um. Just to start on the. Town LED lights and status of them. There are quite a few of them that have been inoperative or functioning for a while. Uh, I had a list of the various ones, they've also now been reported that there are. Three of the five lights on Fifth Street. That are on twenty-four seven, for those now that be added to the things prepared or. And what is the status of the installation of the. Parking lot lights?
We're still waiting for the hookup by night side.
Okay, something I read, uh, I I've been referring to it, referred to as. Ninety-three Main Street is the parking lot?
Yes.
What is seventy-five Main Street? Okay, right, it's, it was also referred to as seventy-five. Okay, the main question remains out of all of these things is that these lights have been inoperative or malfunctioning. For over a year now. I read in the agreement. Between. The NIPA group and. That. They they have, if you notify them. Of a routine maintenance problem. They are committing to replace or repair those. Problems within ten days.
You're talking about the ones on Main Street?
I'm talking about the contract of the lights and maintenance services. Obviously, ten days have gone gone and they haven't hit them.
For which ones? For which ones?
All of them, if you want me to read the whole thing, I can. Main Street lights.
Yeah, that's what I said, Main Street, Main Streets are special decorative lights. There's an issue with them. They were, they're different than your overhead LED lights.
Okay. It doesn't differentiate between decorative or or overhead, it just says LED. That was not done, and my question is. If these had not been placed as would effectively required or at least agreed to. Inoperative equipment.
Paying for you being electricity? Okay, let me read something for you, Star.
Okay.
Okay, and this is from an email that was sent to you. By Charles Herman, because you bring the same thing up all the time. And I tell you about it, but you choose not to understand it or don't want to. Regarding the energy utilization. Please note that I have previously relayed to Brandy that the lights are billed on an unmetered basis by the utility. So while it is true, from an energy perspective. The lights have been burning more energy than they should, the town's utility bill has not been impacted. Typically, the lights we replace are about one-third the wattage of the previous lights. And on average, over the course of the year, the lights average about twelve hours per day. So even running twenty-four seven, the lights are still consuming about thirty percent less energy than the old lights running properly. And from a safety standpoint, it is much better to have a day burner and a light that is off at night. That's from Chuck Herman, and that's an email that was sent to you back in November.
Okay, and the same question is still in the off date. That counts for. Quote-unquote wasting energy, I'm talking about, we're paying electrical. Cars or lights that aren't working, if they're not on, so they're not using it electricity, we're paying for something that is not working. That's my question.
I I I don't know how to make understanding.
Okay, well, obviously, they're not gonna agree on that. Okay, I I might get next question. Why are the ongoing costs for the building of the pavilion being authorized when the town needs to pay focus on how to provide funding relief? For the Narrowsburg Water Sewer Central District. To repair the town's ancient water and sewer infrastructure. I'm not an attorney. But I read in the. New York State Town Law, Article twelve and twelve A. Towns applying to create or extend central district must get approval of the state controller's office. By manually supplying documentation showing that creating or extending the special district will serve the public interest. And, and I think this should be underlined, the cost will not be an undue burden upon the property owners who will bear the cost. That is what I've not heard coming out of this group. That that those people are going to be named for a tremendous amount of money to try to put this thing to right. So set it right here, every year you have to show the controller. In order to get approval of this thing being extended.
We're not extending, we're not, we're not creating or extending a district, what you're reading has no relevance whatsoever to what the town is getting.
Well, okay, how how you not extend, it has to be done every year.
Extended district means you've got an existing district, now you want to add additional property into the district, that is an extension of the district.
So you don't have to, I come to the controller every year about the existing situation? Okay, well, I guess it's screwed up. All right, the last thing. That I wanted to ask about is, again, the public toilet on Main Street. I don't understand how you can put two other toilets down on the flats. And completely ignore the fact that the Main Street area, which is more trafficked and has. Lot more usage or need for this kind of thing is not being put into place. Listen to the last meeting where Ben, I think you said that you volunteered various businesses on Main Street. To have people come in and use their facilities. Um, I talked with two of the Main Street businesses who categorically said that they do not extend. Those privileges to anyone that isn't eating or using their. There is no. Viable public toilet availability on Main Street in Narrowsburg.
Nor any other street, Main Street and Sullivan County.
Well, what does that mean, so that we shouldn't do it? That it shouldn't be accommodated, we have tourists coming in here, we have locals, I work on Main Street, but I'm doing my gardening. Which everybody says, oh, isn't it wonderful, but there's no public toilet, and if the library is closed or. The union hyperflap up there, am I, well, we don't. That's, that's not availability, and it's not serving the public interest of what we're being.
The DDAA per permit, sorry to interrupt you, but the DDAA does permit anybody to come in and use their toilet.
Okay.
You don't have to pay anything or buy anything.
That was not what I was told, I didn't ask them recently, you asked them, I spoke to them about a year ago about this.
Well, that that's currently.
They allow people to come into you. Street?
Yeah.
Okay, it would be nice if somebody would post that, because people going up and down the street do not know that, they, I I can't tell you how many times I've been asked. Where is there a bathroom, is there a restroom somewhere in the area? And up till now, I had to say either go up to the library if it's open, or up to the union. So that would be very good, if they agree to do that, I think that's wonderful, kind of like we'd like to have something on the outside that's sad. Public restroom, something, I don't know that they'll do that, but, yeah, I know that they will allow you to use their public toilet.
And Star, seventy-five Main Street, both of them.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in public comments?
I have two questions, um, when I heard Josh speak before, do you have, you got it, okay. He mentioned this, so, could I hear this correctly, when he said that. The the job for kids can work on a. A non-not-for-profit project. It can't work on a four project, uh, four pro, so the town's not considered a profit.
No.
Okay, even though the intent is at some point to run a business out of the pavilion, rent it out. No, no, hold on, I, you're not gonna rent the pavilion out? That doesn't qualify, I guess, I guess, that doesn't qualify. Okay, so that's not a problem, okay, even though there'll be exchange of money, but it's not.
When they say that, they're talking about a private business, they're not gonna come and build a a a pole barn for me. It's not using.
No, no, no.
My highway or my paving.
No.
Operation or something. They they, but they'll, but the the town is is a disposs.
Regardless of what the municipal uses it.
Right.
Okay, okay, I didn't understand it right. Okay, so now it looks like if, uh, if all goes well, then the job corps would. Sounds like a great thing for kids in this neighborhood. Learning the trade, one, it's gonna be a. Four cost, whatever cost is, whatever you you're able to figure out that.
I'll have to come back to the board with cost.
It's gonna be a four cost, okay, which is really good. Real good, if we're talking about how early on we wanted to explore what the cost of this thing is, putting this out, etcetera, that's one. But I didn't hear anything else said about. Again, 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 unless I'm not understanding it correctly. Pavilion. The bath. Again. It's the intent. Go ahead and build this, um, build a structure with the labor from the job corps and act after. And then lean on, figure out. What it's gonna cost, or is it still, find out what this costs, and then we have to also do part B. Was the projects, if I understand it right. Got one, you gotta have the other, so the known cost is not just. What the pavilion costs.
One of the things I've worked with Jim on is. The bathroom boss, because they make precast bathrooms.
Right.
But then the other thing that we found out is, they do have concrete people that work with. The job corps.
Okay, so. Whatever, i- if if it turns out like that's what it is, it could possibly be a four cost bathroom. If the job corp does. Right, that's. But still, we don't know the cost of it yet, so it's not like you're pushing on to build a pavilion, figure this other thing out later on. But not, can't really do that, because it's. There's no. There's no just pavilion, it's pavilion and bath, it's it's one big pack, and to know the cost of project is to know the cost of. All pieces of construction, right? Um, so I do understand that. Okay. And maybe what I didn't understand is what the intent was, it's not to go ahead, put the pavilion up, and then we'll worry about the other thing later on.
Depending on what the costs are. If the board approves it. You could end up with a pavilion before a bathroom. Because you can go with a temporary C of O. For a certain period of time, but we have to see what the cost is.
But you would at that point. Know what the bathroom's gonna cost, before you, before that, one of those kids could struck the first nail.
Yeah, I mean, that's easy enough, well, like I said, I would work with Jim, okay, we've been looking at pre, no, precast.
That's, that's the crux of my question is that, it's not, we're not, we're not running forward on this, not knowing about this thing boss.
Because some of the things that we're looking at, when we're trying to price out a bathroom, is how much work can we do? You know, our water and sewer department can do the the plumbing of it, our highway department can do the excavation of it. So it's just a case of finding out what.
My question answered. Thank you, and and this is the.
Sorry.
Okay, and just as a comment is. This job for thing, I don't, I don't know a thing about it. Sounds like a nice thing, but.
They do work for fire departments, uh, WJFF, they've worked, job corps is going up and finish. Cause our students leave on Thursday for the summer, but the career tech centers do all kinds of work throughout the town.
There's no, no questions and no problems with though. Um what do you call it, the certificates or uh?
Nope.
How many teen year old kids we're gonna have, but you need a certificate, so the boss has one and it covers everyone.
Well, liability insurance, I'm the work-based learning coordinator of classes.
Okay.
I have a hundred and eighty seven students out in workforce this calendar, as we speak.
Good, so they're not wasting their money on college. All right, thank you for answering the question. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Yes, Bernie?
I have a comment on your generator for the sewer plant. I had to replace the generator in Calco. We had a couple of. Companies come in to take a look at the, through the generators. Generators custom built. It's not off the shelf. Oh, I think it's probably beyond Craig. Need to have a. Big power or wherever else around on generator on the lookout.
Well, that's that's what will happen. He will contact these companies just like we did with the one here. They'll come out to look at your building, see what you need, and then they, it's not Craig saying, I need this with this wattage and.
Oh, it's custom built.
Yeah, no, that's, I'm sure, we're authorized and Craig can get started on it. And to make the contacts and bring the people. Any other public comments? Uh word comments?
Just the the Booz and I talked about maybe having a parking committee, a meeting next November. July, baby, when you're, cause you're pretty busy this for, yeah, this is some conversations about me.
Okay. Any other board comment? Uh meeting reminders, our next work session is July the second, our regular meeting is July the ninth. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor? I opposed.